Call the meeting to order. I'd like to invite our Eagle Scout Riley Lohman up to lead us in the pledge, please.
Will you guys all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Welcome to the February 18th, 2020 Pulse Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. Mr. Malloy had to step out for just a moment. We'll be right back in. Under ceremonies, announcements, and appointments, no announcements tonight, but I would like to invite Riley Lohman back up, please. Many years ago, Mayor Larkin started the recognition of Eagle Scouts, and it's a huge accomplishment. And we're thrilled to have you as part of our community, and it's an honor to recognize you. This is Riley Allen Samuel Lohman. He's with Troop 213 with the Inland Northwest Council in Pulse Falls, and is a junior at Lake City High School. He's been a member of scouting for over 10 years, and he achieved his Eagle Scout on October 16th, 2019. His Eagle project was at the Lake City High School Track and Field, where the team had been using broken equipment carts for many years due to lack of funding and inability to fix or replace the carts. Riley saw this need and in turn created two new wooden equipment carts for the team. The new carts not only help with storing and transporting the team's equipment, but also alleviate the financial burden of replacing them with the team's minimal budget. The Eagle Court of Honor will be held on March 7th, 2020. And Riley, we have a certificate for you in recognition of achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations on attaining the highest ranking within scouting. The realization of this outstanding achievement will undoubtedly lead to the success and accomplishments throughout your life. Best wishes for you and your future. Signed by myself, so thank you very much. Always an honor to recognize outstanding young men and women, so congratulations again, Riley. We do have, I'm gonna one-up you here, Diane, we have a new employee. So, Mr. Manley, would you like to make an introduction? We fooled you, Diane. It wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, so, Community Development would like to introduce Laura Jones. She came to us from Cootney County. She's a new associate planner with the planning team here, so we're pleased to have her, and you should see her coming forward with some land use actions here in the near future.
Welcome, and welcome to Pulse Falls. Congratulations on joining a good team, and I'm sure John will look forward to the help.
Thank you.
So, thank you. We do have a presentation now, Pulse Falls Urban Renewal Agency's annual report. Diane Fountain.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Fountain with the Pulse Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and I'm here tonight to present to you the 2019 annual report. This report is due by March 31st each year. The agency was created in 1991, and our office is located upstairs in the Chamber Building. 2019 officers were Jerry Baltzell, Larry Carsonson, and Lynn Crosby. Monthly commission meetings are held on the 3rd Thursday of each month. Most of the agency's activities fall under one of the following committees: Finance and Policy, District Review, and Communication, Property and Personnel, which meet as necessary. Our workshops are scheduled on an ad-needed basis. Our mission statement is to encourage sound economic and community improvement that enhances the overall quality of life in Pulse Falls by providing and improving infrastructure, attracting jobs, and enhancing citizen safety and health. In the Centerpoint Expo, West Selties, Tulamore, and Pulse Falls Technology Districts, we have proponent developers who build public infrastructure and pay for it upfront. The risk lies solely on them to bring in new businesses, which result in increased property values and tax increment. Increment collected by the county is remitted on a monthly basis, and the agency reimburses the proponent twice a year with the increment received. Increment being collected in the East Pulse Falls, South and Central Districts will fund sewer improvements as well as repay the Greensbury Overpass loan, which at the end of 2019 was $3.1 million. This slide shows the total approved infrastructure costs to date in each of our districts and the remaining obligations. Expo and Centerpoint will have additional costs that will be added to their obligation once submitted and approved by the commission. In the East Pulse Falls District, the agency rebated over $5.4 million in 2009 and 2012, as there were no major projects during that time, so those monies were returned to the taxing entities. As you can see, the West Selties District will close this year, and Expo, Centerpoint, East Pulse Falls, and Tulamore will all close within the next three years. This slide shows a three-year comparison of tax increment received by district. The income received in 2019 decreased approximately 4.5% from the previous year. This was due to the closure of the City Center District. Our financial highlights are based on the agency's annual audit. Increment revenues were lower due to the City Center closure. Interest rates were higher. Our cash increased as there were no major projects being funded by the agency in 2019. And our loan liabilities decreased $1 million as the agency continues to pay down the Washington Trust Bank loan, which requires a 10% loan reserve. The reserve balance is reviewed on an annual basis, and as a result, the agency was able to apply $94,000 to the principal of that loan. Proponent obligations decreased as payments were made to district proponents for approved public infrastructure. And our actual operating expenses were $39,000 less than budgeted. The agency funded $180,000 for sewer improvements in the East Pulse Falls District, and we anticipate funding another $6.2 million between now and 2022 for sewer improvements along Highway 41, which includes a lift station and an EQ basin at 12th Avenue. Expo Parkway was extended to Beck Road in 2019. The slide shows construction of the Maverick Gas Station, which opened in the Centerpoint District. And Expo Parkway was completed in 2019, and it now provides full connection between Pleasant View and Beck Road. This slide shows the increase in valuation, highlighted in green, in the three districts that the agency has closed. When the original West Selties District closed in 2001, the assessed value had increased $55.5 million. Riverbend closed in 2012, and the increased valuation was $56.6 million. City Center closed in 2018, and the valuation of that district had increased over $40 million. These three closures total $152 million in increased valuation that now goes to the various taxing entities as a result of urban renewal in Pulse Falls. As districts close, this table shows the amounts that will go back to the taxing entity and the taxpayer. The numbers are based on 2019 levy rates and increment revenues that are subject to change when the districts actually close. As you can see from this slide, when the Urban Renewal Agency has completed our job, a huge amount of new development tax increment will be returned to the taxing entities and the taxpayer, not only for the year the district closes, but every year in the future. This is a huge benefit to each of the taxing entities and to each and every taxpayer, a total of $4.3 million over the next few years. What does this mean for the city of Pulse Falls? Again, as districts close, this table shows the amounts that will go back to the city of Pulse Falls and the taxpayer. As mentioned before, the numbers are based on 2019 levy rates, which are subject to change when the districts actually close. Based on the pace of new development, we consider these projections are conservative, and the available increased revenue to the city will be greater when these districts actually close. The new development is a direct result of investment in public infrastructure that was accomplished through this use of the city's urban renewal program. Urban renewal and tax increment financing are the most significant tools available for attracting businesses and economic development, promoting job creation, and encouraging development of blighted and underutilized areas. In August of this year, the agency will close the West Selties II District. It will be the fourth urban renewal district to close in Pulse Falls. On behalf of the commission, we would like to thank the mayor and council for your willingness to work in partnership with the commission to consider the feasibility of new districts as our current districts come to a close.
Thank you, Diane. It's always a pleasure to get your annual report. I made comment at a meeting we had earlier today that there are those that don't like urban renewal, there are those that do like it. But regardless of their position, they say if urban renewal is done properly, it's done in Pulse Falls. So, it's a history that I think you can be very proud of. I know we are. So, thank you very much for all you do, and for the, I know I saw at least one commission member out there, for all the work they do and the time they put into making this a successful venture.
Thank you.
Next up, council, I would like to ask for confirmation of Laura Whalen to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have one opening now, and there will be another one coming forth probably in the next couple of months. And so, we're working on that right now. We've got a few folks lined up, but we're, that'll be a few months down the road. But at this point, I would like to ask for confirmation of Laura Whalen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Porters?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I look forward to having Laura on board. I do understand, Mr. Wilson, there is an amendment to the agenda tonight.
Yes, I don't see that the applicant is here for the Dodge Annexation Administrative Appeal, so I would ask for the council to remove that from the agenda. We'll put it back on the agenda when we're sure that the applicant can be here. I didn't see them come in tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thank you. I should mention there are three other public hearings tonight, so if anybody wishes to testify on those, there is a form on the podium in the back. Please fill it out, give it to Shannon or clerk, and we'll listen to you at the appropriate time. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight?
I will refuse myself from the Wildflower Meadows Zone Change to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest because I have relatives involved in that project.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
Item A is minutes, January 28th, 2020, City Council Workshop. Item B is minutes from the February 4th, 2020, City Council Meeting. Item C is payables, January 28th through February 10th, 2020. Item D is amendment number one to the Trailer Park Wave Maintenance Services Agreement with Avista. Item E, changing purchase of police cars for the fiscal year 20 budget. Item F is shack addition minor subdivision plot application. Item G is Cootney County Transit Federal 5310 Grant Letter of Support. And item H is lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS.
Any questions on consent?
I do have one question. In light of the possible change in property taxes, the item E in regards to the police cars, does that bind us to having to do that? Or are we just open to the regular budget when it comes up? You know what I'm saying?
There's no contractual obligation to purchase at this point. It's been approved in this year's budget.
Right. It's within the fiscal year 20 budget right now. The fiscal year 21 would be the one impacted by the tax changes.
I'm good, Dan.
And for those who are not aware what the tax changes are, they are talking about freezing all property taxability of the city. All agencies taxing districts with the exception of schools, and it has passed the House and is going on to the Senate. That would mean we couldn't take new construction. You couldn't take 3%. And so, basically, your property tax amount will be the same amount as it is within the current fiscal year.
Can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
I came from a meeting this morning regarding that, and I was understanding that those tax increases would freeze for just one year.
Yes. For fiscal year 21, it would be frozen.
And you made a comment on taxes would stay the same, the tax revenue would stay the same.
The tax budget would be the same as it is within the current fiscal year. Fiscal year 20's tax budget would remain the same for fiscal year 21.
What they don't say is if we freeze it at that levy and the valuation of your house goes up, your taxes can still go up even with the tax freeze. So, people need to be aware of it. It sounds like they're doing everyone a favor, but they're not allowing the city's ability to take new growth. That is what has kept us from having to take an increase for the past 10 years with one exception, the streetlights. So, it's not as rosy as it may appear, but I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Right, and the new construction will be lost. Also, it's not going to go to the forgone, so you would not be able to recapture that within the fiscal year 22.
So, all that new growth that is helping to pay for itself will not.
It will not, no.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Porters?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is the first public hearing. And tonight is Montrose West Zone Change. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. We have John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City Post Falls, introducing the Montrose West Zone Change Case File RZNE 5-2019. The applicant is the City Post Falls Planning Division specifically, and the request is to rezone approximately 27 acres that's currently out in the Montrose PUD from an industrial designation to an R1 designation. And this would bring the area more in line with the approved PUD that's currently out there. On January 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the R1. Also, they approved, conditionally approved, subject to tonight's hearing, the PUD amendment. And I'll go into more details of what specifics are with that PUD with this application. So, what you see here, the project location, you see McGuire Road just to the west and Selties Way. So, this is just a bit to the northeast of the intersection of Selties and McGuire. It's heading internal into the Montrose PUD. PUD is a larger area. The area affected for the PUD is only this little bit south of Okanagan. Okanagan runs east-west, just about in this alignment within the Montrose PUD. Everything to the north is already platted, R1 homes. So, the desire is to get a zone that matches with the built environment. Currently, as stated, mostly single-family homes. There's no topology or topography, and vegetation matters. The water is provided by East Green Acres with the City Post Falls providing sewer. We have six zone change criteria. First slide will go over the first three. They kind of have tied together the most. They're looking at the future land use map. Is it consistent with it? Looks at the goals and policies of the comp plan. In the staff report, there's a lot of detail on the consistencies of the proposal, and this proposal was deemed consistent with policies that are in that comp plan. The other one is looking at street classifications, the traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. As stated, there is a community plan, the Montrose PUD, that defines this area. The proposal that they're having to change is none of the effects on the street classifications or traffic patterns that's already in place and was set in stone with that Montrose PUD. Also, as stated in the intro, the existing development is R1, and their intent is mostly to match that. So, looking at the surrounding zoning, here's what you see. Here, there's the industrial. This has created a couple of problems throughout Pulse Falls. Whenever you have a disconnect between the zoning and the PUD, you have appraisers. They go to appraise a house and zone industrial. It confuses that. It also can bring up matters with code enforcement. You get uses that may be permitted in industrial, but yet it's built as a single-family home, so is it a home occupation that doesn't allow certain activities? So, this is more or less a housekeeping item for the way staff sees it to help clean up the site. There's also, you look south of Okanagan, this here is an industrial subdivision, as well as you have Orgill just to the east. The strip of land that you have running just south of Okanagan is fairly thin, so it doesn't allow for good usage of that from industrial. Also, you'll see I'll go into the industrial policies. It speaks to placing industrial more towards your major collectors, arterials, ideally closer to your major intersections. So, being internal and the lack of depth didn't really lend itself long-term for industrial, for this development. So, the idea was for the applicant, which will be in the next public hearing and affects this, would be that there would be a buffer yard placed between the single-family and the industrial to the south that's enabled through Title 18, the landscaping code section, that allows, in situations like this, to mitigate non-compatible uses that are adjacent. And this kind of, there's the future land use map that you see there, mostly being consistent. You see the residential and the proposed R1 district being compatible with that. Then on to the three criteria here. You see the commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along the street classifications as well. Okanagan wouldn't be considered this, so low-density residential would be fitting for that criteria, which then ties into the fifth criteria there, which is speaking to the lower density, and where you would place that. And then, what I touched on was the industrial zoning, being sufficient access. So, it doesn't really affect this request, but it really isn't the best place for industrial either. Here's the Exhibit S6, where it showed that the applicant was willing and is participating in that 25-foot buffer in the landscaping standards to mitigate the two uses being adjacent. Once again, the future land use map. Here's the agencies that are routed. We only got comments from the Police Department and the Cootney County Fire, of which were neutral. Do you have any questions for me on this request?
John, it's, I don't recall where the city has been the applicant on a zone change. Has that, have we done that much in the past? It just seems to have been unusual.
This is an unusual one because it's already platted. So, it already has homeowners that have already purchased their building homes, and so that's why the city was the applicant versus the private party, which is in the next public hearing, which they actually still own that land, and they can still direct that direction. So, this is an unusual circumstance.
Any other questions, John? Thanks, sir. That would be the staff report, the proponent, and do we have anybody wishing to testify?
We have none.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Right.
I can give a chance to everybody. Council, how'd you like to act?
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'd move to approve the Montrose West Zone Change from industrial to R1.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Porters?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up, Montrose Zone Change. Open the public hearing.
I don't see the applicant representative here. I don't know if it changes their request much. It's, we know what they're requesting, so I'll go into that. So, bit of a typo here. I just see that it's 27.6 acres. They're actually asking for 42 acres. It's a larger area, which I will go into. Same request, industrial to that R1 PUD. You said the similar recommendation from P&amp;Z coming forward, recommending the R1, and similarly affecting the PUD. Project location, you see here, the 42 acres is just to the east of that. This is coinciding with their intent with the original PUD for expansions of single-family to the east. So, it's mostly vacant at this point in time. There's no significant topology with water being provided by East Green Acres and sewer provided by City of Pulse Falls. Looking at the zone change criteria, it's very similar to the previous public hearing, so I don't want to go into a lot of detail on it, but it was consistent with the future land use map and the goals and policies in the comp plan. Looking at the zoning, there's the industrial, and hence the request for R1. Here is the future land use map, where you see it's predominantly residentially designated. Similar discussions regarding where to place single-family or lower-density housing in proximity to collector streets. This would be an ideal location for that single-family rather than commercial and higher densities. And really, they're not asking for industrial at this point, and it's not really applicable to this last one. Same Exhibit S6 regarding the buffer, similar application, the 25-foot buffer. Agencies routed. Heard from the police in Cootney County. They were neutral. Do you have questions on this request?
Couple of questions. Warren, might the applicant not have been notified? I mean...
This would be a noticed public hearing, so they should have been noticed. I'm not sure why they're not here. I think you've got a couple of options tonight. It looks like we don't have anyone else that wants to testify tonight. So, you could make a decision tonight based on the record you have before you, which is essentially the staff report, the information that came forward from the Planning Commission, John's presentation. If you don't think you can reach a decision based on that, we can continue this to the next meeting, reach out to the applicant, or you can take testimony because it looks like we don't have anybody that wants to testify. So, it looks like you have a couple of options.
Okay. I just want to make sure that even if it's approved, that there's not an issue that could be created.
Yeah, that would be fine.
John, question of you. You talk about the buffer. I know the Orgill had expressed concern at one point about having residential, and I think maybe ATC had as well, residential right up to their property. Is that buffer that you talk about sufficient enough to ease their concerns?
I would call probably Bob up. I know he's had direct communication with the facility itself. I haven't, so I could have him speak on that behalf. I would note that typically, though, that buffer between industrial and residential has been applied for some time here in Pulse Falls, and it seems to mitigate the effect, so...
I just know they had raised a question, so...
Yes, Bob Basile, Community Development Director. So, I did speak to some of the active supervisors on site when I was there a couple of months ago, and just kind of briefly mentioned, hey, you know, we're looking at, you know, the residential properties expanding in the rear of the property, and they were like, oh, yeah, we already knew about that. We already anticipated the traffic flows on Empire Center, things along those lines. While the director has recently changed, we have not had been in contact with that person yet. But the supervisors that basically manage the site were aware of the residential in the back as well as potential for traffic along Empire Center, so...
I would assume with that buffer, they'd be fine, but I know that they did raise a concern.
Yeah, and there is the buffer, and there is a type of buffer already in the back, a raised hillside, basically, in addition to what may be applied to the residential properties.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for John? Gary.
What is that, is that buffer the same 25 feet that you're talking about in the other one?
Yes, it'd be pretty much continuous adjacent to the industrial from south of Okanagan bordering this property. There's a certain degree of prescription for deciduous and evergreen trees within that 25-foot buffer, as well as a fence wall or berm.
Yeah, that's a generous buffer.
Questions? Thanks, John. No one wishing to testify?
None.
Close the public hearing, council.
Well, I think that since the hearing was published, that if any one of those commercial entities would have wanted to come, they would have come. I know they read, I'm sure they read the paper, so I'm ready to move on it if everybody else is.
Yep.
Okay. I would move to approve Montrose Zone Change.
Okay. I would move to approve Montrose Zone Change, file number RZNE-0003-2019, with the conditions raised by planning and zoning.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item, public hearings, is Wild Flower Meadow Zone Change. Open the public hearing.
Yes, so this one, case file RZNE-2, 2019. Owners being Stephen Cassell and Deanna Hubert, and the applicant is Ace Solutions LLC. The requested action is for city council to review and approve this request from R1, single-family residential zoning, to the medium-density R2 zoning district. You see the location here. It's on the southwest corner of Midway and McGuire. Approximately 8.63 acres. It's a large lot, single-family currently. East Green Acres would provide the water, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. Sixth review criteria on this proposal, is it consistent with the future land use map? Looking at the goals and policies and the conference plan, looking at the street classifications, traffic patterns, is it existing development, future land use, community plans, any natural or geographic features? This area doesn't have any specific community plans or known geographic or natural features worth mentioning. The future land use map I'll go into, but it is consistent with that. Existing development, it's all single-family in nature, so it would be compatible with the existing development in the area. Going back to whether you're a large five-acre lot or smaller single-family to the south, medium density is considered to be an appropriate application and compatible next to other residential development. Street classifications and traffic patterns, this is a busy road, or it's going to become busier, McGuire Road is a major road. So, the proposed medium density would compatible with the street classifications, which you've seen further in your staff report, further detail on that analysis. Here's where you look at the zoning currently. You have just to the east, although it's industrial, it is a multifamily project just to the east of that on McGuire. Then it transitions into the single-family. That's typical with the major roads. You see, is that transitioning from your higher uses into your less dense product further away from the major road? Here's the future land use map, the current one that you see, the yellow, that's all residential, so that brings on that compatibility. What I did though with this is put on the proposed future land use. This is the one that we just recently had a workshop on, that we plan on March, starting the public process for adoption. And this is Celtis Way to the south, and then you have, this is McGuire. So, philosophically, this is set up so you have that transitional commercial along Celtis Way, and then you would buffer future single-family, what you see here in the blue, that's the transitional area, from potentially high-density, medium-density along those major roads, and then into some less dense product off to the northwest. So, the proposal is compatible with the draft comp plan and the future land use map now. Looking at commercial and high-density, the fourth one, once again, it speaks to placing that along streets with higher road classification. So, that's the fourth zone change criteria, so I would see it meets that. It's not necessarily high-density, but it's higher than low-density, which you see in the next criteria where it's saying, trying to get it further away. Once again, mimicking what you've seen at Montrose, kind of how it went from the McGuire Road into that less dense housing product. The next criteria isn't really applicable to the request. This is the agencies that were routed, and we heard back from the police department as neutral on the proposal. Comments or questions?
Questions, John?
John, talk to me a little bit about the difference between R2 and R3. What I can see, anything you can do in R3, you can do in R2.
So, I did bring the vocal placement table that kind of highlights the overarching differences between them. So, as you see here, the R2 and the R3 both have four different types of product that could be permitted with it. They have single-family both, they got duplexes both, they all, both have other MF. R2 has a twin home, which is basically a two-unit townhome, similar to a duplex, but it functions like a townhome. And then with the R3 currently, you can do townhomes in that, two units or more townhomes in the R3. So, let's, they're very similar. What sets them apart a bit, though, is what you see, I'm gonna have to zoom out just a bit, just a second, I think, so... Is the lot area per dwelling unit. So, for instance, like the other MF, which is a multifamily product, it's 3,000 square feet of land per unit, versus when you go to the multifamily, you see the 2,400. So, less land per unit, so you can put more units on an R3 than you can in an R2. So, that's really the big difference in them, because you still have... I did notice this while I went through this exercise, 3,600 for the duplex in the R3 versus in the R2. Oh, it's the same, 7,200 square feet of land for two units, so it's the same in both the R3 and the R2. But not a whole lot different.
That's what I was just trying to make clear, that even though the proponent has talked about building duplexes on this property, we make this change to R2 tonight, essentially they could build a apartment building there. It just, the units would be larger and...
Yeah, and you get the cap here. You see 12 units per acre versus the 18 per acre for the multifamily. One thing that's misleading is oftentimes is the twin home. It says 18 units per acre. That's a net. So, some of this is, it doesn't delineate at top gross versus net. A lot of times when you're doing townhomes and twin homes, you're just, you've just got a net parcel left over versus a large area, you may have roads and stuff that gross comes into play. So, you probably would have a hard time yielding 18 with a, with a townhome or, or twin home product.
Gary.
And other differences in the R3, you can go up to a 45-foot height.
Yes, thank you, right there.
All of the others, even in R3, are 35.
And that's pretty significant when you're butting it up against other single-family homes and they share that same max elevation. Thanks for bringing that up.
John, I just want to confirm, my question is, why would you go out in an open field like that and put anything other than single-family? But you said the property just to the east is already, although it's zone industrial, is multifamily?
Yeah. Yeah, you can kind of see it right there, so that's just to the east.
Okay. I've driven by it. I haven't, when this came up, I have not gone by it intentionally because we're not supposed to do that, but I just want to confirm that that was in fact multifamily now. Steve.
John, I was thinking back on what you originally annexed property. Didn't they come in with asking for an R2 zoning at that time as the council? We passed it with R1 zoning?
That was actually the projects just to the south. And then the same applicant rep, Ace Solutions, represented them both. I can't, it'd be speculative to know why they originally came in as R1. Maybe the applicant or their reps can answer that this evening. To answer the mayor's inquiry, why would someone go multifamily, and I can't, once again, speak to them. Typically, with your higher classified roads and at an intersection like this, your infrastructure costs go up, and sometimes what you may seem as a good idea and you look at the cost of improvements, and I know we're not here to pencil it for anybody, but it's possible that someone could go, and it's been oftentimes in our pre-abs, those are the discussions I have with parties, is requesting an increase in density because of some of the costs to just meet city improvements.
I understand the financial side of it, but to me, it's, it's got to be compatible, and if there's no other multifamily in there, why would you do it? I'm, I'm probably okay with it with the development to the east, but if you look at everything to the west, there's, there's no other multifamily, so to me, that would not be a good fit. But again, we have some just adjacent, so... Any questions? Does the applicant wish to speak? Please.
Looks like it.
Name for the record, sir, and then you've got a timer up here.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Steve Castle, 2518, excuse me, West Midway Avenue. Pertaining to that last discussion, I think R3 also includes apartment buildings, and I think that's a big differentiation between R2 and the R3, at least in my mind, so... Anyway, I support the zone change, change from R1 to R2 based on the need for medium-density housing. As you can see, there's, single-family zoning is very active, and the R3 multifamily apartments are also growing in numbers. We propose R2 to fill a gap or a need for affordable duplex units for young families that can transition to single-family homeownership, as well as an affordable option for seniors in our area. I've had personal experience in Caldwell down by Boise, which is similar in size to Post Falls. I was down there for eight years, from 2008 to 2016, and I lived in duplex development. During that time, I observed, I observed that many young couples and families came in, stayed two or three years, and then moved on to homeownership. I also saw seniors in adjacent but separate small duplex units. Those units were quiet with minimal yard space that was maintained by a property management. Now, we all know that development is driven by market supply and demand, and I feel that the market for medium-density housing here is, is strong in Post Falls. That's why we're proposing that.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions. Thanks, sir. Anyone wishing to testify? In opposition, wishing to testify, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Well, I remember when that piece of property was brought in, when it was asked to be annexed in, and the discussion that went on about whether it should be R2 or R1, and the amount of folks that came in from that adjoining area that did not want any R2 in there. You folks have, up on the council, have brought up quite a few good points. There is no guarantee that they're going to build these duplexes. Well, two single-family homes and then a number of duplexes. There is no guarantee at this point if you change that zoning. It should be R1 because it fits the area. It just, we're losing our small family farms quite a lot lately. But to cram in that many homes, the, the potential of that many homes, because there is no, okay, we're gonna do R2 this or R2 that. No, it's R2. It means at one point, they could, if the right development, developer got a hold of it, they could shove 18 units per acre in. Mr. Manley is correct. It'd be damn hard to do it and have a road structure in there, but it could be done. McGuire Road is, I like to compare it to what Chase Road was 15 years ago. It hasn't, it's not a sea of rooftops yet. But if we approve this one with multifamily R2, I believe we're just setting up McGuire to look just like Chase, a sea of rooftops. And we won't, there won't be any Prairie left. I didn't mean to get emotional on this one, but it seems like it's the first start to just filling in all that with houses again. And if, I'd like to keep them as minimal of housing as we can with the R1. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I should have announced that there was nobody wishing to speak in favor or neutral, so that was the only testimony tonight. The applicant liked to rebut. If you care to, you come up and you get a few minutes to address the questions that were raised.
I think my main point on, on supporting this is that we're looking for a transition area for, as I mentioned, young couples and seniors. There's an awful lot of single-family homes development around there right now, and some, you know, the prices are going up on those homes, making it unaffordable for, for a lot of young families to be able to, to live in those. This provides a transitional area where they can live and work for two, three, four years, build up some, some money and able to transition into a single-family residential home. And that's, that's my main proposal. We don't propose to put 18 units per acre. We're talking about duplexes, which I think is, on the chart is 12, 12 per acre.
Thanks, sir. That'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how'd you like to act?
I have a question for counsel. Since this is an R2 zone, is there any type of restriction we can put on there to mitigate the potential of multifamily? I mean, it's permitted, so...
There is. So, in our code, actually, let me step back. Idaho code allows for something called development agreements, which is a fancier way of saying contract zoning, which allows you to limit the development of a parcel that would otherwise be allowed in the zone and place some restrictions on that. To do that, you have to pass an ordinance that authorizes that. We did that, call it, a year and a half ago. We require them in our mixed-use zones, the, the technology mix. We require them in the new commercial and residential mixed zones that you'll have the ordinance for later tonight. We require them with annexation. Other properties are at the discretion of the council. So, if the council wanted to require a development agreement to move this forward, we could put a restriction on there that would limit this to duplexes, if that's, was your druthers. To do that, we would need to negotiate an agreement and bring that back to the council for approval. That's the only way that we have to limit this type of development. Otherwise, once you make a zone change, you get every right that's included in that zone. I will tell you that contract zoning is probably not everybody's favorite thing, and it's really up to your discretion whether or not this is a project that warrants that. We've limited it in our code to the mixed-use products. You could maybe analogize, this is similar to a mixed-use product. But that's because when you're doing a mixed-use zone, you have a lot of moving parts, and it's sometimes nice to be able to figure out exactly how things are going to develop. So, that's a long-winded way of saying there is a way to do it, if, if that's your druthers.
I guess my concern, I'll share this with the rest of the council, is I like Mr. Castle's plan. I, I think that we do need more duplex available property, if you will. But just as Mr. Flowers' concern, I have the same concern, and that is, Mr. Castle sells the property tomorrow, and the next guy comes in, and even though it's R2, he can still put 96 units some way on that property. I think that's too dense. So, if there's a way to do that... So if there's a way to do that through a development agreement, that's what I would be in favor of.
Then I have a question. Does that development agreement stay with the property?
It does. It gets recorded, and it binds all future owners of the property. If you want to change the development agreement, it requires a public hearing before the council.
I'm good with that, if we can.
My only concern is, I know when we annexed this property, we were concerned about apartments starting to move west of McGuire. We wanted to try to keep it R1, single-family housing, and not have all the apartments. Would this affect, then, future properties coming in, say, to the north of there, that we have this now, R2, and they want to come in R2? I know it's our choice, we can go R1 or R2.
So there's no easy way to answer that. Every application is judged on its own merits. Having said that, when you're doing a zone change or an annexation, you're doing zoning upfront for an annexation, typically, you're looking at, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with your future land use map? We do look at, is it consistent with the uses in the area? So I think, as John showed you earlier, the proposed future land use map shows higher density along the major road and then transitioning down to a single family. So I think, in some ways, that's an item that you'll be looking at as you adopt the new comprehensive plan as well. So it's, again, a long way of saying it depends.
Yeah.
Do you want to comment?
I kind of struggle with this one, just because the way things are right now is there's a pretty clear delineation of, you know, higher-density residential and very low-density, and that delineation is McGuire Road. Everything is very rural on one side and pretty dense on the other. I don't know that, I feel obligated to change that at this point. If there was other higher-density stuff coming in to the south, ideally, then it might make more sense right now. I know we're looking at a proposed future land use map. How far in the future that is isn't really determined. But right now, it's, for those that live on the big lots to the west of McGuire, that's a pretty natural delineation of where those larger lots ought to stay, in my opinion.
Well, who would like to float a motion, see where we go?
You might help me with the wording on this.
So if, so if you're looking to essentially approve it with a development agreement that would limit it to duplex or below, that would be one motion that you could make. And then we would negotiate an agreement and bring it back.
That would be the motion I would make, that we approve the Wildflower Meadows Zone Change File Number RZNE 002-2019 with a development agreement that would limit the development to duplex or less.
Or less.
Or less.
I'd second that.
Motion second, further discussion.
My discussion is, what is, what is less than a duplex? A single-family home?
Yeah.
Essentially, twin homes.
Oh, okay.
Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Nay.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Nay.
Thorson?
Nay.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion fails. Is there another motion to come forward? Seen none. Do we?
The other available motions would be a motion to approve as presented or to deny.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
That was second.
And it dies for lack of.
Motion dies for lack of second. Is there a third motion to come forward?
Move to deny.
Second.
Motion second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Nay.
Thorson?
Nay.
Motion fails. This could have been an interesting one. I could have been casting a tiebreaker.
Oh, yeah?
Mr. Wilson, what are our options? We've got no motions that have been approved or seconded, so.
So we owe the applicant an answer, and we have to create a reasoned decision that explains the basis for our decision. So we need to have a positive motion one way or the other, either to approve it in some form or fashion or to deny. So I suppose I would recommend taking another stab at a motion and see what happens if anybody's changed their mind.
There really are no other options at this point, right?
That's pretty much it.
Talking about the three.
I think you've covered the waterfront at this point.
I guess I'd like to hear Joe and Steve's thinking in terms of, are you just against the density of?
Yeah. My thinking was, when we first annexed this, we had neighbors come in and talked about it, and we pretty much, because it did, if I remember right, it did have a different zoning on it when it was first presented. And with R1, when the neighbors came in and talked with it, it seemed like we reached a compromise of annexing the property, but in an R1 annexation. And there wasn't really any complaints at that time. So I felt pretty comfortable with that decision during the annexation process.
I guess my only comment on that would be that if those same neighbors were still in opposition of a R2 and the plan that Mr. Castle presents, why are they not here to speak to that? I almost think in terms of their silence is saying they're okay with his proposal. I don't know that the, I would say that the general public doesn't know that R2 and R3, you know, are that similar, and they wouldn't know that essentially, if we don't put the development agreement on there, that somebody could come in there and build an apartment building.
Yeah. And that being said, since we have the three motions, probably out of the three, if we're not going to deny it completely, I would go back to Al's original motion on that with the conditions.
And I would, too, which would.
Pass that one.
Well, make a motion again, and we'll see if we get a second. We'll take a vote.
Try it again, Al.
All right, we'll try it again. I move that we approve Wildflower Meadows Zone Change, RZNE 002-2019, with a development agreement that would limit the future development to duplexes or less.
Second.
Motion is second. Further questions? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, that was, no, 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 we don't laugh, thank you. That was interesting. Thank you. Never had that before.
What an interesting night.
Yes. And the next public hearing has been pulled, so we are now on unfinished business. Black Bay Park Design Validation and Schematic Design.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Myers, Parks Manager here at the city. Today, we're talking about Black Bay Park once again. It's been a topic over the last few months. I'll go through the timeline of where we've been on this process, dating back to August of 2018. With me today is Scott Jordan. We're actually gonna kind of tag-team the next two items. We'll hit the schematic design and design validation piece first, and then if there are no questions, we'll move kind of into that next item, kind of off the same presentation here, if that's fine with you, because they are relatively connected. So right now, we're in the design validation and schematic design. The next council item is Consulting Services Agreement for Park Construction Design and Detail Design. As I mentioned, August of 2018, we came forward and requested publishing an RFP to select a consulting firm to update our master plan for Black Bay Park. With that, we contracted with Civitas and then embarked on a outreach, community outreach strategy to identify what the public wanted to see with this park. That wrapped up and went to adoption about a year later, in August of 2019. And since October, we've been working through this design validation strategy, where we reached back out to the public and tried to refine our phasing strategy to ultimately come up with what's before you today. Over the last six weeks, we've been working on schematic design, and Scott's gonna go through the details of that here shortly. Kind of backing up to the direction that the public gave us for where they wanted to see Black Bay Park go, out of that park master planning process, we identified some guiding principles for everything that should be kind of weighed against as we move forward here. So those were overall to preserve while enhancing, so try to preserve the natural integrity of the park, the natural setting that's been well-protected since the '30s as a park in our downtown area. To place the park in motion, provide opportunity for the social intersections of folks that otherwise might not cross paths with each other, provide opportunity for access of all folks to be able to move throughout the park. Activate without overpowering. Scott has mentioned in previous meetings, those surgical insertions into the park, those elements that we can add, that it looks like we were there, but not to the stance that we tried to overdo it and try to make something out of what something already is spectacular in the park as it is. To provide a park for everyone, we're looking for a park that'll cross all age demographics, socioeconomic demographics, all of those interactions of folks that have different ability levels, different interests, those that want to engage with the wooded lands, that want to be able to have vista of our urbanized setting, and those that want to have the vista of the river and the undisturbed site. And then engage the bay, activating the water and providing opportunity for our citizens and visitors to engage in that waterway has come out in our parking deck master plan effort and has come out heavily in this design process. So along those lines, the master plan outlined four major phases of development. What you see on the screen here is what that initial brawl master plan would be, highlighted with that boardwalk facility along the shore, updating the parking along Third, enhancing the streetscape along Bay, removing the parking lot from the center core of the park, enhancing the bay itself and providing some shoreline stabilization there, the interconnected loop trail system, and then a number of furnishings and amenities throughout the park to provide that activation strategy. The current scope was to go through and engage the community again to ensure that we got the design phasing appropriate, that we were spending those dollars in a way that if we moved forward with only this one phase and never saw any later phases, did we get what we wanted and ensure that we put the effort into the right elements of the park. So we went through, did that community outreach strategy to validate that design. And with that, the image on the screen, Scott will go through the details of that, but those elements are what boiled up and what fleshed out in this process. And with those, we moved into that schematic design piece and have began to put the form and function to what each of those individual improvements will be. Along those lines, we had some initial permitting agency coordination that was threaded throughout this whole scope, reaching out to the various permitting agencies that would provide input on this ultimately, and allowing them to inform our design as we moved forward to ensure that as we move into detail design, we didn't have any roadblocks that we wouldn't have been aware of. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to Scott to talk through the design validation and schematic design strategy.
Thanks, Brian. As Brian said, my name's Scott Jordan, I'm Principal of Civitas. Glad to be before you again and talking about this wonderful project. As he mentioned, we went through the design validation phase, really to confirm what it was that the community wanted to see in Phase One. You know, we had a fixed budget of what we were targeting, of about $5 million. Where did we want to spend that money to get the best park we could with this initial investment in the Black Bay Park? And so with that, the key design elements were the inclusive trail system, the pink lines throughout here, adding more trails to reconnect the entire park with lighting and signage enhancements, creating some rest areas throughout the parks, people could just sit and enjoy the natural setting with which the park it has, adding some restrooms, looking at adding a board rock, creating a beach, a lounge deck, a play area, and a rival plaza. So really, what were the amenities that we wanted to see? And we went through an entire process and had the community make selections based on budget. I want to add these things, but I got to take away these things, therefore, our budget balances itself out. And so what we've done now, since that time, is we've come back to the community on January 28th, where we showed specific design alternatives, a couple alternatives for each area, and said, which of these do you prefer and why? And had them kind of fill out a scorecard, if you will, creating their starting lineup of what they wanted to see for each of those areas. And so on that meeting, we had 35 community participants come out to that meeting. We also put it available online. I did a pre-recorded presentation that somebody could look at and do the same survey, and we had 17 additional people. So we had about 52 people participate in the survey, which, from my experience in larger communities, if we get 52 people out, that's great. Smaller communities, even better. And so I think you've actually got pretty good community participation with this. And what I'll do is quickly take you through each of the areas, the two alternatives that we shared, and then where we ended up, and then I'll talk a little bit about the budget at the end of the presentation. And so the first area that we talked a lot about was this arrival pavilion and restroom. And so this is just south of the entry road, coming down Bay Street, south of the parking lot, at the claim of the lawn area there, as you look at it in the picture to the foreground. In this, we looked at two different scenarios. One that looked at kind of off-the-shelf shade structures, a wood bench, the other being more of a custom shade structure with a community harvest table where you kind of, the community could gather and get together and hang out under that shade structure with the restroom facility. You see the numbers on the bottom, the darker gray are the internet votes, and the lighter gray are the in-person votes from the exercise that we did. You can see, most people preferred the arrival access, but one of the interesting things we learned from reading the comments that we got was that a lot of people liked the kind of wood bench object that was the deck in option, the plinth porch option. They wanted to see that in the arrival sequence. And so where we're at today is we've actually updated the design and schematic design to have more of the linear shade structure with a bench at its location. And then one of the big suggestions we heard, actually, from Parks Department staff, was maybe we should look at the restroom not right in that area, but just to the north of that area. So that way, in the future, if you ever do move that parking up to Third Street and you reclaim that area as park space, that restroom could serve a second shade structure that would come in the future. So thinking about, in the future, how would this phase together? And so you can see the restrooms at the very top of the plan kind of shifted up to the north, and there's actually a nice little flat area there that we can place it, it gives us better access to utilities, reducing some costs as we move forward. The next area we wanted to talk about was the play area, and this is another one that during validation, what was interesting is, when you read the responses, it read like people didn't want the play area. But in fact, when we talked with the community, it was where we had the play area located. So we've intentionally moved it down into the lower lawn area here, looked at a couple different alternatives, one looking at a kind of a large play feature that climbs its way up the landform, the second being more of a naturalized play feature that kind of crashes the landform into the lawn, and kind of like a landslide in, making a more natural-based play area with some play structures. As you can see, people like the landslide idea, but we heard a lot of comments that the play structure would be something that they could really see kids wanting as a part of it. So we kind of split the difference here, came up with a design that includes some play structures that wrap around more of a native area in the middle, but again, having that slide, having these other community elements that children tend to really gravitate towards when it comes to a play area. Which is, this is a representation of what that could look like conceptually, looking at kind of some more natural logs, rocks, but also some formal play features that climb up that slope. The next area that we talked about is at the south end of the lawn that just overlooks the bay. And this is an area today that, while the Eagle Skull Bridge is a great bridge that was put in by the community, it leads you right into a really rough area that's not really accessible for most people that don't have great mobility, can't really walk and explore this area. And it's a really nice area to sit and overlook towards the actual water. You've got some existing benches and furnishing here that look towards the bay that are really nice space, but most people can't get access to here because it's just not level enough. And then there's a lower area just below that overlook that is where people kind of hang out when they are using the water itself. And so we looked at a couple of different alternatives, both look at exploring, creating a new bridge with a wood deck that creates a flat surface that's fully accessible so everybody could have access to this area. everybody could have access to this area. The image on the left looks at a series of decks, one that faces the lawn so you can look back towards the lawn, one that faces the bay so you can look towards the bay, and then a lower area that creates kind of a gathering area for the community where it's kind of in use today. The second option on the right, the lounge deck, is really just a simple deck up high with a very simple gravel path down to a gravel, a slightly enlarged gravel area. As you can see by the voting, people really like the multiple deck areas that were offered in the timber living rooms. And so this alternative looks at basically doing that with a slightly different set of terrace stairs down to that lower area. And that was just based on us coming out, looking at the site again when we were out here for the community meeting, and realizing we probably need that to make that area a little bit more accessible. It won't be, the lowest area won't be fully ADA accessible, but it'll be a lot more accessible than it is today by creating these terrace stairs. The next area is actually an area that was never in the original design, and in fact, it came in as we realized, as we were looking at budget, there's this area down, you can see on the screen, it's probably easiest point here, this is the kind of beach area that exists at kind of the nose of the bay today. There's an area about 15 feet up the hill, which you're seeing in this photo, that's a big flat area that has really amazing views of the river itself. This was an area we discovered again just by coming out, looking at the site, revisiting it over and over again. And we looked at two different alternatives. The one on the left, both of them have shade structures, the one on the left has an off-the-shelf shade structure. It has this interesting added amenity of kind of an overlooked deck. And the idea there is that you can get up high and look up and down river and get a really unique experience that you can't get anywhere else that is fully accessible. The image on the right is more of a linear shade structure with the harvest table and then an idea of a porch swing. I've lost my mouse, here we go. Pulling it the wrong way, that's why it's going backwards, sorry. A porch swing so you can sit and kind of just overlook the bay. And what we found was that most people liked the overlooked plaza, but when we talked to them, it was that overlooked structure. It was the actual deck that stuck out, that gave them that experience of the river that they wanted. And so as we looked at how to develop this, we went more with the linear shade structure that has the harvest table with the swing, but also more of an overlooked structure that really gives you these dramatic views of the bay up and downstream. And then the beach boardwalk area, this is an area that we've talked a lot about, I know with Council President Wilhelm, we've talked a lot about how do we deal with this area, make sure we have safe access, but make sure we don't put people out into the river too far and create risk of safety and health and safety of people that are using the area. And so this is just looking at it from across the way. And I'll point out quickly on the previous slide, you can kind of see with what you're seeing here, how much erosion that's gone on in this area, and you've really lost this beach area that you've had for years and years and years. And so in fact, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but looking at armoring this edge so we can reclaim that beach area and make it usable year-round, we looked at two different scenarios. Both tucked the boardwalk up into the bay with railings on the water, on the riverside, with access down to give you access into the bay, both for ADA access, but also for hand-powered watercraft, your paddle boards, your kayaks, your canoes, with a little bit of a rest area. This one is actually inspired more by the original log floats that used to see when they used to float the logs down the river for logging operations, having this more unique structure that wraps around the bit of a boardwalk. And one of the interesting things is one of our community participants that comes out all the time is Destiny, and she's in a wheelchair. And one of the things she said that I had never thought of, and this is why I love community process, was she didn't like this scenario because she felt if she was using this to get down, she'd be blocking the views of everybody sitting on the stairs because she's wheeling in front of them. And so she actually preferred this alternative where you could get down to the water, but you're not blocking everybody else's view. So she wasn't just thinking of herself, she was thinking about the bigger community experience. And so with that, you can see that people generally liked the option on the right. And so that's basically what we've evolved here. And a couple of the interesting things to point out is there would be a continuous railing on the water side with an area here that has this kind of leaning rail where you can kind of lean out and look down at the water to create a unique experience of the water, with railing on the backside as well. Only spot there wouldn't be railing during the warmer summer seasons is where we have the terrace stairs down to the water back towards the bay. So again, pushing people into the bay rather than out into the river as they're using it, we would add a rail that would be added in winter time when the waters receded so you don't have a drop-off off that edge with that. And one of the big concerns was how far out does this protrude into the river? And that's why we did this exhibit, just to show that really we're actually further inland than the land itself as you get further to the west in this. And this is what that experience could begin to look at and just kind of emphasize here, you can see some of the railings, but again, pushing people back into the bay rather than out and really trying to enhance that sense of safety and comfort for people using the water while still allowing this beach area to be direct access into the water itself. And then we went through a series of rest areas, and these were an interesting component because these were elements that we were looking at just surgically adding into the park that celebrated unique areas that we had discovered through our tours of the park with Brian and a few other folks from the Parks Department, Brian and Dave in particular. The first one being this overlook area where you get up near the water tower, you get these amazing views of nature looking towards the south. If we could do something here as simple as adding a little rest area with a bench and some signage that just celebrates that view, how can we make these really unique spaces that enhance the experience of what you have rather than making it something new and different? The next area is actually along the kind of ravine that runs along just the tennis courts and basketball courts are right here in existing parking. There's this really great valley walk that you can go along in there that's a really unique experience because you're kind of surrounded by landform. Could we create a little history post here where you talk a little bit about the history of the park and do something as simple as a couple of rock boulders where you can just step off the path and just enjoy nature at that location? The next area is another area that is kind of one of the main open areas within the park where you can just look at creating something really simple as an interesting rock walkway back to more of a nature art experience that creates kind of an interesting area. The interesting thing here is we looked at adding, you've got these phosphorescent rocks that you can add that absorb sunlight and then create a bit of a glow. So it creates this kind of discovered experience that kind of draws you out to this really interesting art element at the end of it that again, just suggests a little bit of surgical incision into the landscape, but doesn't make it anything more than just celebrating the unique features of the space. This cairn getaway is an area that people are already using and stacking rocks up. It's, we call them inukshuks in Canada, you let people know you're there by creating these inukshuks or cairns. This is an area that we think is quite wonderful as it is, but how can you take that and maybe enhance those with some additional rock features that really create a unique experience that would be unique to this place within the park? And then there's an area that currently exists that actually Brian and Dave talked a lot about the first time we were out. There's kind of this natural amphitheater that exists here. And could you just look at doing some simple placement of kind of rock benches along here with a bit of a stage that could create a kind of a community gathering area where you could have small performances or even just go out and enjoy nature within that space? And then the second to last area is a really unique area over on the western edge of the site. It's probably the densest tree forest you have on that edge of the site, of pine forest. And this is just the idea, can you create an area where you get in there and you lay back in loungers and just look up through the tree canopy at the skyline? It's really a dramatically different experience than you have elsewhere in the park, so why not just accentuate that just by adding a few simple benches into that area? And the last area is, there's a large set of stairs that are going to be necessary to get up to this higher area. When you get up to the top of it, again, you have a bit of an overlook towards the river. Can you just create another kind of lean rail that gives you a place to experience that up at the top? And so with the community involvement here, what was interesting is you saw in the previous ones where it was pick your choice between the two, there was not a lot of consistency between what you saw from the community that was at the meeting where we could talk to them versus what they saw from what they heard from the presentation, had to interpret themselves. What I find fascinating about the rest area is that if you actually look at the numbers, people voted the exact same way whether they were onsite or on the internet, which suggests that there is a hierarchy to these rest areas. And this is really be used as we get further into design, and if budgets become an issue, we might lose some of these areas that are least valued by the community as you go through this first phase. And so then the one last big thing that we talked a lot about that got brought into Phase One was restoring and protecting the bay. You've got a really amazing resource that's been eroding, been failing. How can we go in and protect this edge and do it in a way that actually accentuates the way the bay is used? And so we've got three different systems that can be used, the first being your standard riprap with the geotextile fabric. That's a solution you want to use when you want to maintain some access to the bay. Basically, you have rocks, you have larger rocks that create a series of steps down in so you can get people into the water while armoring that edge. In areas where you maybe don't want people to get into the water, you can do the same armoring, but there's, the beautiful thing about nature and willows is you can take willow shoots and just basically plant them in the rock formations, it'll build sediment up, those willows will regenerate, and you'll get a living kind of edge that's armored and protected. So you get a green edge rather than just rocks, which in certain areas where you don't want people using, that could be a great way of doing it. And then the last type of scenario that's more for kind of aquatic species and creating habitat is this idea of a root wad. And basically, you take a tree with its roots sticking out, you bury the trunk into the bay or into the bank, and that the roots there collect sediment and create a really interesting microhabitat that allows a variety of different aquatic species to grow and live in that area and use that as kind of habitat. So that'd be something that we could add intermittently along certain edges where we're not looking to have people access that area. And then the last major kind of armoring that has to occur, and I'm going to go back a couple of slides just to point it out in here, we got some areas in here that have really steep slopes where they're already eroding and we're starting to see some failure on your existing walks. Those are areas where we could do a simple concrete wall and do that, but I don't think that's very attuned to this idea of enhancing while preserving the natural qualities. And so we're actually looking at doing more of a living wall system. This is a engineered soil bag system that you basically can stack up vertically, hydroseed it, and it's got growing medium within the bags, and so this will get revegetated with plants. And you can do that in such a way that you can do different terraces of that, so that way you can have trees that are, have their roots exposed, get those protected while not burying them too deep so that kills the roots or kills the trees off because you've starved the roots of oxygen. And so with this entire overall scenario, one thing I want to point out is when you actually look at the plan graphic, what I'm most proud about this plan is we're touching only about 15% of the land with this proposed Phase One, and yet we're making some pretty dramatic changes to it. Overall, the original estimate during vision plan was about 4.95 million. We've gone through, and there's a lot of detail that's behind these numbers, but we're basically at about $5 million. What's interesting to note is we've actually added an additional, we have two shade structures now that weren't in the original Phase One plan. We have two restrooms that are a part of it, and we have a whole series of new boardwalks and decks that weren't a part of it. So in fact, by doing the validation, we've been able to condense the scope while adding more features that'll give you better community benefit in the long term. And so that's where we've ended up with this current scenario. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Brian to take it into the end, or actually I'll open it up for any questions you may have
Any questions?
...on the design before we go into the next one.
So the next item on the agenda is the construction, or design, or consulting services agreement for detailed design and construction design for this project. So given that updated Phase One, what we've done is come up with an anticipated schedule for what it would take to get to construction documents and detailed design and permitting to go along with that. Design development would be a 12-week process. Final design development documents would also include stormwater design, stormwater pollution prevention plan, preliminary engineering report, and the necessary documents that go along with that to support the permitting piece of this element. And then construction documents, bid documents that would help get us to the point where we go out to request for bids for construction of this project. And then the permitting piece, all of this goes along with the design development, construction documents. This is coordination between City Post Falls, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, IDL, US Army Corps of Engineers, and the Idaho Department of Water Resources. It also would give us the documentation we need to satisfy the requirements of the floodplain development permit because we are working within that high-water floodplain as well as just normal full pool, and then also environmental services elements to this plan. Diving into that permitting piece a little more, it includes technical coordination with the City Post Falls and Community Development Department to highlight that floodplain development permit, coordination with the requirements of FEMA. The big element here is an effective or an ineffective flow. So basically, they're trying to identify of whether or not the improvements that are going to be made to the shoreline are going to cause a no-rise condition or not. If the ineffective flow is determined, then a no-rise condition is assumed. So basically, in that scenario, we don't have to go into hydraulic modeling of the river to determine whether or not the structures that are going to be added to the shoreline or within the river aren't going to cause somebody else's property to flood. So we want to ensure that our improvements are not going to do any damage elsewhere. And that's what that process does for us. So if that, or the effective flow is determined, at that point, we have to trigger additional survey of the river to allow additional modeling to happen to determine and prove that the improvements we're making are not causing that scenario to happen. Permitting piece, ongoing, environmental services is a piece of that that's included in that engineering report. That would include our cultural resources report, areas of potential effect, biological assessment, shoreline impact assessment, habitat management plan. All of those will also help us in our grant writing efforts that we put on moving forward after we get construction documents and a more detailed cost estimate. Also, development and smittle of a joint application to the US Army Corps of Engineer, Idaho Department of Water Resources, and Idaho Department of Lands. So that application would then give us the ability to move this forward. We'd have to have that in hand or well down the road in an effort to try to secure grant funding as well. That's one of the items that they're going to be looking for as we pursue that portion of the project. With that, the detailed fee breakdown for the design development, $181,775. Construction documents is a larger portion of that, $233,420. A big portion of this is engineering costs between structural engineering for the structures, the walls that are included, and then all of the shoreline improvements and such that are included. That puts that fixed fee at $415,195 with reimbursable expenses at $3,000, travel expenses at $1,800, bringing that total fee to $436,195. On the permitting piece, once again, because we don't know that ineffective or effective flow definition at this point, we've, in an effort to try to control costs, moved with an hourly contingency line of $59,850, allowing us to mold that to whatever our site conditions require with this process. Total fee breakdown at $496,145. Again, this is a little more than what we're accustomed seeing, you know, but this full park development is a little more robust than what we saw, say, at Tullamore or some of our other local neighborhood parks. So we haven't seen numbers like this come in for a while. We recognize that, and we've been really judicious in trying to do what we can to control those design costs. One of the ways, like I said, we did that was through that permitting piece. With that, our request is to approve the Professional Landscape Architecture Services Agreement for Black Bay Park Design Phase Services. With that, stand for any questions.
Brian, question for you. You're talking five and a half million dollars. So first question, impact fees?
Impact fees would be kind of our starting point for our participation into the development to help pursue those grants and try to look for grant matching dollars.
Gut feel, what's the chance we're going to get grant dollars to help accomplish this?
I'm pretty confident on a couple of areas that we can go after and be sound. I think the recreational trail program is going to be really solid. I think our waterway improvement fund is another grant source that we're going to be looking at that is going to be a potential funding source for a number of the shoreline armoring solutions that we're looking at here, as well as the waterway access elements, the mooring dock and the overlocked boardwalk plaza. Beyond that, we've got, the recreational trail program could also apply to waterway travel, so water trails, blue trails. So water trails, blue trails are kind of a hot ticket item in the park and rec field. And that's another element that is starting to boil to the surface on our park and rec master plan. So it'll be identified in another plan there. That gives us good strength to try to secure funding there. So that, those are, those are two larger dollar items that we can begin to move on. Other potential grant sources, we'll go out and look for those. We'll potentially look for private donations and potentially even naming rights. One of the things that came out of our park and rec master plan is a majority or a super majority of our public is in favor of those options. So we'll pursue those as well.
And it's designed in such a way that should funds not be available, all funds not be available, you could do it in stages then?
We could start to break this apart. Ideally, that's not the case. And we could move forward with a, with a full Phase One design implementation. Every time we mobilize, we're going to have additional costs. So we'll try to put together a strategy that will help pull this funding together and make the whole thing happen all at once, but.
Next question I have is 16 weeks till you come back with, or till you go out to bid?
Right, 16 plus the 12.
Oh, plus the 12. So you're going to be in June, July? Okay, is that probably?
October, November.
My concern was to go out to bid in June when everybody's going to be busy, but you're going to be July, August, probably September. Maybe things will slow down, who knows?
Sure. And beyond that, our grant application process, our grants are due the end of January.
Okay.
So we're going to be having full, full-scale design, which will help us leverage those grant dollars because we're ready to go, we're shovel-ready. And that helps be competitive. We'll have all of our permitting in hand by that point in time or nearly in hand, once again, making us competitive in that grant, grant process. So we're trying to line that up so that we're on, online to have good quality documentation and a quality grant on the table at the State House.
I'd just hate to see us go to bid in June or July.
Yeah, we're looking for that ideal blend between November and December.
Steve?
Well, I think we talked a little bit about that committee meeting because it is a large sum for schematic design to have a plan that could just sit on the shelf. So I asked Dave if maybe give us the council an update of where we are at now with the impact fees so we know where we're sitting financially.
Steve?
Dave Farrar, Park and Rec Director, Mayor Council. Before I get into where we're at in impact fees, I'd like to, so Ron understands where I am looking at on this project. I'm figuring about 70% of it will be impact fees. The balance will go after grants and our park trust. I think there's some things that we can do in-house. Brian mentioned Tolemore, and I could tell you I had sticker shock. I've had sticker shocks, I think, just about every project we've been doing the last few years. Life has changed since we started out the project. But with Tolemore, we had a, a design that was done by the developer. We were given kind of schematics. We ended up spending extra money to have some things designed, but we also spent extra money when we didn't have some of the electrical figured out or we didn't know about some of the structural soils. So there were things in the construction side that cost us more. In this, I think we've learned from some of our, our past practices, so that will reduce on that side. With that said, as of today, we have $3.4 million in impact fees. We do have projects that are already set for some of that, whether it's the Prairie Trail, whether it's sport filled design. But I anticipate that at the end of our fiscal year, if this is approved, we'll still have about 2.5 to 2.75 set aside, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give a question?
That was my question. I was curious how much we had left in impact fees. We spend $500,000 to create a plan, we're going to want to spend $5 million to build the plan, right? We don't have that much.
We don't. But also, when looking at these numbers, the thing we asked Scott to look at was to be very conservative. Things like in their pricing, they doubled the thickness of the paved pathways from what we do. So we know that there's some cost savings in there. Obviously, the type of wood that we put up on it will have, have a price, just like with Falls Park. We went ahead and used local mills. We went with dimensional lumber, or is that nominal? Whichever. Anyhow, we went with the thicker wood. There are things we can do. We have a very talented construction crew. So some of those other items that you saw in there can be done in-house. They can also be done as volunteer projects.
Any questions?
I will tell you, I always wish we had more money. I think, I think you all know that about me. I know I've been called cheap too, so you also know that we will be as cost-effective as we can be. But we do have to meet the requirements so that we can permit these things.
Okay.
I have a comment if I could. I don't have a question, but I would just like to thank the Parks Department and the consultant. They, they all have talked to me quite a bit because I did have some concerns. But I wasn't the only one who had concerns. We had a lot of other people who use that waterway that have gotten in touch with all of us and sent us pictures and what their, you know, what their concerns were. So I do really appreciate you guys listening to that and taking that, you know, to heart when you built the safety onto that, especially that floating dock, boardwalk, whatever that's called. That being said, I would be in favor of this. I'm ready to make a motion if the, if the council is.
I got a question. Do we have to make two motions here?
Yeah, I think we have two, two actions requested.
Yeah, we do.
Combine them into one motion.
So it looks like you're approving both the schematic design and then also the contract for the design?
Can we do one or do you need two?
I would do them separately. They're listed separately.
Okay. I would move to approve the Black Bay Park Design Validation and Schematic Design.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
I would move to approve the Black Bay Park Consulting Services Agreement.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item up, city center master plan, urban renewal.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for a five-minute recess?
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Hey, John, I got a question for you.
Call the meeting back to order. Next item up is the City Center Master Plan, Urban Renewal. Who is presenting on that one?
Did someone call or something?
Is everybody?
Bob and you. Nobody.
Nobody? Here he comes.
Do we have a presenter?
I just saw him come through there. There he is.
He's coming. Thought maybe he wasn't notified either.
Drum roll.
I move that we deny the request.
Yeah.
Drum roll.
We have a motion to deny.
First time I'd be like, I don't have time.
That saves you a whole lot of time if they just denied it and then we could.
Yeah. That could. That could save us a lot of energy and work over next year. Bob Seal, Community Development Director. So before you, you've got a request for the Community Development Department to engage the Metz Group as well as Welch Comer to put together three separate plans for us. The feasibility study for their renewal district in downtown, a build-out analysis for, that would lead to that feasibility study and help with it, and as well as the update to the 2005 City Center Master Plan. These requests stem from earlier engagement with the council as well as the public. When we had ULI come and present to us last summer, there was some discussion as to whether or not the City Center Master Plan was still up to date, still current, and that we were directed to look into updating it and basically engaging the public as well as staff and commission and council members to review it to make sure that we, again, are on the same page and still moving forward. So that will be the first step within this process is updating the City Center Master Plan. At the same time, they will be working on a build-out analysis and a feasibility study. The Metz Group had quoted us around $16,000 just for the feasibility study originally, and when we determined that we needed the additional help for the two extra pieces, we approached Welch Comer, who had done the original 2005 City Center Master Plan, understanding they would be able to utilize some of the earlier information that they already had from drafting that. And after conversations, it was determined that the two would work best together so that there would be no, there would be better overlap and that we would not be missing out on the synergy between the two agencies. So my request would be to approve the $50,000 to $60,000 price tag for those three different plans.
Funding to come from?
It's annexation fees.
And is based on conversation, Urban Renewal may participate in that?
They may participate up to 50%, yes.
That was what they had indicated, yes.
Okay.
What are the conditions of their participation? You say may participate up to 50%?
They want to be involved in the process and have asked to have the, their title added into the.
Into the scope of work.
Contract, it's really a scope of work, yes. And so Bob is working with Welch Comer to add their title in, along with city, as I'll say, City of Post Falls and Urban Renewal Agency.
They want to make sure they're involved up front and they feel they may be able to add some assistance and not get down the road and have something come up that they're not aware of being asked to participate in.
All right, so just to sum up, to get them to cover 50%, all we need to do is add their name to the thing.
They indicated that they would be, that they would fund up to 50% at a, at a staff meeting that we had, along with a member of the commission as well as staff from the commission. I didn't want to put "they will" based on the fact that it was not the full committee that was at the.
So they still have to approve this at their Urban Renewal meeting, I believe this coming Thursday, but I'm not 100% sure if it's on this agenda or not.
But they mentioned to us again in the meeting this morning.
Okay. So everybody's confident?
Yes.
All right.
Now, Bob, does this, is this contingent at all on the new Urban Renewal District that's been proposed for this area?
This is part, well, this is part of it. We needed to update the City Center Master Plan. It is from 2005, which is substantially, you know, old when it comes to plans. And it will help inform the Urban Renewal Plan for the City Center area. The City Center Plan is more contingent upon the Master Plan, the City Center Master Plan and the feasibility study and the build-out analysis. So we won't be able to get to any kind of proposal or adoption of a City Center Urban Renewal District without these three pieces.
Okay. That's kind of where I was going with that is, we're not saying to these engineers or these planners that to plan, make this plan with the idea in mind that the Urban Renewal District's going to be this big.
Correct. Well, the, yeah, the, we will be looking at the boundary for the City Center Master Plan as, you know, and considering where to put those boundary lines, especially since we are looking at an Urban Renewal District that expands beyond the current boundaries of the City Center Master Plan. Sorry, a lot of City Center in there. So Urban Renewal District right now is a little different than the current City Center Plan lines.
The nice thing is, one of these contracts is for the feasibility, the whole thing, see if it makes sense. Okay.
I would move to approve the City Center Master Plan, URD feasibility study and build-out analysis contract with Metz Group and Welch Comer.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to testify, please come forward and give your name. Seeing none. Next item is new business. Tonight we have none, followed by ordinances. We do have one.
Move to place the ordinance, mixed zoning and design standards on its first and only reading by under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
Give me a minute, my computer just froze. Can you give a kill up on yours?
It just came up.
Oh, there we go. Oh, it went to the wrong one. My computer doesn't like me tonight. There we go. It was thinking, apparently.
We were just waiting, waiting, you got the show.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Coopney County, Idaho, amending municipal code sections 1816010 and 1820190 to establish three new zoning districts, including the community commercial mixed CCM, residential mixed RM, and public reserve zoning districts. Establishing development regulations for the new zones, including permitted uses, setback requirements, development intensity or development requirements, and buffer yard requirements. Designating appropriate locations for the new zones and authorizing development agreements for the new mixed-use zoning districts. Amending sections 1820040 and 1824030 to repeal the requirements for garages for certain residential uses and to adopt multifamily residential performance standards, including equipment screening, orientation of structures, buffer yard requirements, lighting standards, and open space requirements. Adopting a new section 1824035 to establish regulations for vertical mixed-use developments, including location of parking and entrances, screening of parking areas, location of vehicular drives, height of ground floors in mixed-use buildings, setback requirements, allotted encroachments into rights-of-ways and glazing requirements. Repealing sections 1820030 and adopting a new section 1820030 to provide a new land-use table showing the allowable use, land uses in various zoning districts. Repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, mixed zoning and design standards to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Administrator staff reports, we have three. The first is the agenda format revision. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. So you have in your packet tonight a draft agenda amendment. We've taken some time recently to review our amendment, or excuse me, our agenda. There's been some changes into the public records law, the open meetings law, and also we've done some changes to our hearing procedures recently that necessitated updating our agenda. So I think I'll walk quickly through the major changes, just scrolling through the new agenda that you have in front of you. The major change is we changed some of the explanatory language in each section, added some more detail in some locations so people can see, for instance, on the public hearing how long they have to testify. As you go down the agenda, we have added to the declaration of conflict section that we currently have. In land use actions, we also need to declare if there's been ex parte contacts or site visits, as the mayor referenced earlier. So we've amended that prompt to be a little bit broader to, so that we make sure we're capturing both ex parte contacts as well as site visits in addition to conflicts.
Site visits would include driving by a piece of land?
Yes, and so we've talked about this in training. We're going to do some more training coming up. John and I are working on it now. Anytime you go and visit the site, you have to have a notice and opportunity for the opponents to be there. So if you've driven by a site, you essentially say, I see this on my way to work every day. That's all you need to do. You just need to put that in the record.
I was going to say, do you have to change the way you?
It's a small town still.
I know.
We all see most of the things all the time, so that's, that's what that section is. Moving further down, we have changed up the way that we're going to handle resolutions and ordinances. In the past, we've had a separate standalone section for resolution and ordinances, and sometimes that's been a bit clumsy as we're trying to transition. You hear a presentation during new business or doing a hearing, and the resolution is, you know, three items below on the agenda, and so that transition, what do we do with this? Do we make a motion now or do we wait? We're trying to address that by having the resolution or ordinance right there where you have it. If you consider it during the hearings, you'll have the resolution during the hearings. If you're considering it doing new business or old business, that's where the resolution or ordinance would be located. So you just, you deal with it once, move on. Typically, we try to return ordinances and resolutions rather than give them to you on the same night that you first hear them. I think that's just the best way to do business, but there are occasions where, you know, press of business needing to get things done, where you might see an ordinance or a resolution during new business or a hearing rather than having it come back to you at a later night. There's some examples in the form that we have given for you, how that might appear in your agenda. So we would move from hearings to unfinished business slash returning ordinances and resolutions. The next would be new business, and then we would move into, too far here.
Staff reports.
Staff reports. We moved citizens' issues below staff reports, and there's sort of a method to this madness. Under the open meetings laws, you're not supposed to address anything that's not been listed on the agenda item, and it's really hard to do that if you have a citizen come in and ask questions or present information. All of our inclination is to ask more information, to have a discussion. We're supposed to, we're directed by the code to say, put that on the future agenda. And so we moved that to just before mayor and council comments. So if we have a citizen raise an issue, the mayor or the council could say, ask staff during their comments to place that on the agenda for the next meeting so we can provide the information that the citizen was asking about. So that's kind of the reason that we're doing that. Finally, the last major change is clarifying that, as you know, we now have to list everything that we're going to do as an action item, and that causes a bit of confusion when it comes to executive session because we have to take a vote to get into executive session, but we can't do anything once we get there that's a final decision. So if you say it's an action item, it can be misleading. So we've tried to clarify the language that it's only an action item to get into the session, that we're not going to take any final action without returning to regular session. So that's the bulk of the changes. I wanted to present that to you before it showed up on an agenda and you wondered what was going on. Any questions, comments?
I'd just like to thank you because now that we're accustomed to this, you're going to throw curveballs at us. You're going to watch me stammer and stutter and step all over myself trying to get through it, so I think it makes sense. Any other comments?
Looks good.
Yep. Thanks, Warren.
Thank you.
Next item is.
So that wasn't an action item?
No, that was not an action item.
The IWC Irrigation and Landscape Design Standards. Greg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to speak to you tonight regarding one of the stakeholder groups that the City of Post Falls is, acts in. And this regional organization is IWAAC, which stands for the Idaho-Washington Aquifer Collaborative. And it's comprised of about 19 entities, predominantly water purveyors, in North Idaho and Spokane area that draw our potable water from the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. I'm giving you sort of an abridged version of a roadshow presentation that was developed by IWAAC to talk about some of the work that they're doing and deliverables that have been, that have come from that work. So our resource, the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer is, is one reason that allows a lot of the quality of life that we have here. It's an incredible resource. We heavily use it, and you can see here, water usage triples during the summer. The scale on the, on the left there, this is in billions of gallons. So draws from the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer are heavy, and we really ask a lot of that aquifer, especially in the summer. Obviously, what drives this is irrigation. IWAAC, in looking for some guidance to give to purveyors, went out looking for irrigation standards within the industry and pretty much found none. Asking entities that are involved, do you have any? And most everybody said no. There's a drive to try and develop some of those, and so finding none, IWAAC endeavored to develop some on our own and in consultation with a consultant. There were several goals. Reduce regional summer irrigation, peak usage, and I'll talk about why that's an important goal for us in a little bit. Enhance regional efficiency standards. Protect water quality and quantity. Protect the resource we have, essentially. And the one that spoke most to me was provide a menu of implementation options from which municipalities could choose. So try not to enforce any of the entities to follow these, but provide tools if we look to, to develop some standards. We're not acting alone, and we have some, some framework to go with. So the goal, this is an overview of Whitman Elementary School in Spokane, Washington. You can see irrigation throughout their areas. There's, you know, complete lack of irrigation here, not sure what might be going on. These are the interesting ones, and they're un-uniform irrigation. And the standard response to this would be, just run your sprinklers longer, right? Here in Post Falls, Highlands Golf Course, their driving range, you see some similar patterns. There's also some interesting ones, not quite sure what's going on here. So are we using the resource the best way possible? Do we need to up the, the time that the sprinklers are running or there are other options? We learned that there are. A very simple one is, with new technology, changing out spray heads can build better uniformity of irrigation, and it also uses less water at the same time. So you can see a reduction in water use, but get better coverage over a lawn. Taking a case study, so this is an overview of Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. And in 2005, before we really started developing the standards, they tried to do some of this on their own. We've learned a bit since, but just from their efforts, they were able to reduce their, their water usage 42.9 gallons per minute, every minute that their system is running. And they've been able to achieve good coverage over their lawn. So they're, they're using less water and getting better coverage. So that's some of what went into developing the irrigation standards. Where the rubber meets the road or where the water meets the lawn, why this is important to utilities is when we are doing our design planning, we plan for the peaks, right? We need to be able to meet that peak demand when it's called upon. If we can reduce those peaks, we may be able to get a longer life out of our existing infrastructure, reduce the frequency of motor upgrades or drilling new wells, because we're designing to a lower peak. So if, if we can promote some of those standards, there may be a benefit to our infrastructure as well. Aside from irrigation standards, IWAAC also worked to develop some turf standards and other low water usage for this area specifically that people could draw from. And those were, so the landscape design, those were packaged into a model efficient irrigation and landscape design standard packet. That was developed with the participation of all the entrants, and again, is, is a resource that a little bit from each entity develops something that we can each draw upon as we see best fit. So that's some of the, the work we're doing with IWAAC. Obviously, anything beyond this here in the city would, would require some cross-department coordination, but continue to work with the agency and, and see where it goes.
Any questions, Greg? Good information. Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item up is Urban Forestry Progress Report. Preston.
Mayor Jacobson, City Council. Thanks for having me this evening. My name's Preston Hill. I'm the urban forester for the city. And today, we're just going to, we're going to give you an annual report on the, on the division. This is really just going to be a check-in. I don't get the opportunity to speak before you very often, and so I'm going to give you a little bit of a reminder about the services that we provide. I'm going to talk about the areas where we perform best, and I'm going to talk about the areas that we could improve, and then I'll open it for questions. There's a couple of things I want you to keep in mind as we go through this, and one is the difference between forestry and arboriculture. Urban forester is really a blending of the two. Forestry is the management of trees as a population, and arboriculture is the management of trees as individuals. And so in urban forestry, we do both of those things. As far as community development, city planning is concerned, we look at the urban forest as a population. And as far as individual management of sites is concerned, we look at trees as individuals. The second thing I'd like you to keep in mind is how closely we work together across all the departments in the city. Obviously, urban forestry is an integral part of Parks and Recreation Department. We also work very closely with community development. We work with the police department on right-of-way issues, code enforcement issues, concerns like that, and also very closely with the street department on street tree issues. So the services that we provide at the city, at urban forestry, we directly maintain and care for city-managed trees and natural areas. We have pretty, pretty staunch involvement with community development, and they're allowed to give, they have allowed us to give input on lots of that. And we maintain a street tree partnership with adjacent property owners. And then our final service that we provide is public outreach, which is all about education. So the first area is direct care of trees and natural areas. We have over 30 parks in the city and over 30 other city-managed sites, like City Hall, Police Department, things like that. There's about 2,500 park trees in our electronic inventory. We keep a GIS inventory of all of our public trees in developed areas. That does not include natural area trees, just developed part, developed areas. About 2,500 trees on city sites. And then we have about 650 acres of natural areas. On those 650 acres of natural areas, we have 12 miles of natural surface trails and two and a half miles of Spokane River shoreline. So it's a, it's a fair amount to, to address. This, this graphic is showing some of the park sites, most of the park sites in our system. And, and I'll remind you that we're talking about planting, removals, pruning, direct care and maintenance of all of those resources on all of those sites. The, the next area of input that we have at the city is in community development. And so the three areas of community development that we are involved in are new city sites, new city projects, like Tullamore Park that you see up here before picture, designed photo, and an aerial photo after the park was built. For city sites, we have design input and plan review and post-construction inspection, and then also sometimes assistance with the actual landscape installation of the site itself. We're also involved in community development on commercial construction projects. And Greens Ferry Elementary up there, we're involved in pre-application meetings to, to communicate to the project managers what the city's landscape and street tree requirements are. We are involved in site plan review before the project is approved, and we're also involved in post-construction inspection to make sure that what was installed is, does actually meet the city's requirements. Also in new residential projects, this is Crown Point. We're involved in reviewing the street tree plan for each new subdivision, and then also post-construction inspections for all street trees after the homes are built. Our next area of involvement is a street tree partnership with adjacent property owners. So we currently have 13,000 street trees in our electronic inventory. Those are trees within the public road rights-of-way. And our city code stipulates that the adjacent property owner is responsible for the care and maintenance of those trees. But we found that it works out best if we describe it and function as if it were a, a management partnership. And so what that means is that we consult with residents about the street trees adjacent to their homes and help them in any way that we can. We do perform quite a bit of hands-on field work. Some examples of those are cyclical clearance pruning on street trees throughout the city. Clearance pruning in advance of paving and chip sealing projects. We do an annual signed clearance pruning also, and we do root pruning in conjunction with sidewalk repairs that the street, um, street department does. So also as a part of this street tree partnership, we also manage the city codes that pertain to those street trees. And we are looking at some revisions to urban forestry-related city codes. Nothing revolutionary, just a little bit of housekeeping, and so please be looking for that in the, in the future. So our final area of involvement is public outreach. So we have three, we're involved in three ways with public outreach. We have two events every year. You guys may have heard of the Tree Given Way, which is where we try to reach the average citizen in, in Post Falls. We also conduct a fifth-grade forestry field trip for all fifth graders in the City of Post Falls every year, and that's where we try to reach youngsters. And, and our final involvement with, is with a group called Community Canopy, which is a multi-agency group dedicated to providing educational workshops for green industry professionals. for green industry professionals. So we have a couple of those workshops every year. So the areas that we perform best are on trees in the built environment. So we're talking about street trees and park trees. Those are the areas that we're situated and equipped to be the most successful, and I think we do a pretty good job of that. I did include a slide there of the most recent windstorm. I think we did okay on the windstorm. It was a great example of interdepartmental collaboration, and I think it was very successful for us to be able to clear these roadways for first responders and emergency services. So those are the areas that we do really well. The areas that we have room to grow are in the natural areas and the trails. So I did mention that we had 650 acres of natural area, 12 miles of natural surface trails, and that's, that's quite a bit to manage. And it seems to always take a backseat to the built environment, natural resources that we, that we maintain. Some of our goals would be to actively manage the noxious weed population in those areas, address some of the Spokane River shoreline restoration, renovate some social trails that we're constantly fighting in our sites, and take a more, more proactive approach to forest management. We also do want to clean up some city code. I, I mentioned that previously. So that'll be some clarification and simplification, reducing some regulatory code requirements, and a reorganization and consolidation of you, you, urban forestry-related code. So we're hoping to get those out to you sometime within the next year. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Good information. Preston, you guys do a great job. It's evidenced by the, all the trees you see, so we appreciate it. Any other comments, Kerry?
I have a question. You were...
Sure.
Saying "we."
Yeah.
How many is "we" in Urban Forestry Department?
So we're a small division. There are two full-time, year-round employees, myself included, and then one nine-month seasonal employee, so we're two and 3/4.
That's pretty awesome.
A lot of trees for 2 and 3/4.
Wow.
Good job.
Preston, are we going to do the Tree Giveaway again?
I'm, I'm, I'm in those conversations. It's unclear at this point, but, you know, fingers crossed.
Yeah, good. It's a great event.
Bert won't let me have any more anyway.
Any comments? Thank you, Preston. Mayor comments? And I can't think of any, except that was really an interesting vote on public hearing. It was definitely different, so...
Thank you.
We're awesome.
It was, it was somewhat entertaining, actually, so... Council comments? Seeing none? We do not need a, an executive session tonight?
We do not.
The next motion is?
adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be adjourned. Thank you.